Commitment to social action. So why are we here today on this lovely sunny Sunday afternoon? Fulton County is the most populous county in the state of Georgia. It is home to the state capital, Atlanta. And like every other county in the state, Fulton voters will enter the polls beginning tomorrow, the first day of early voting. Today, we will hear from candidates seeking to earn the votes of Fulton County residents as they seek to serve as sheriff, the county's top law enforcement office, and District Six County Commission, which includes a large number of legacy and new communities. In case you have not noticed, we are in an amazing facility, the Barren Atlantis Seventh Day Adventist Church. Please help me to thank the church for being the host here today. I don't believe I see Pastor Saunders yet, but we certainly want to, we certainly want to share that without the help of Pastor Saunders and being able to pull today off, it would have not happened. Pastor Saunders is known for working closely with the Collier Heights community to host a number of neighborhood events. So again, welcome this afternoon, and I will turn it over to this gentleman right here in front of me. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And yes, let's give a round of applause. We want to thank you. My name is Ray McClendon. I'm president of Communities United for Justice, one of the partners, and also a proud member of Capitol Alpha Phi Fraternity Incorporated. We are proud to be here with you because this is an opportunity for you to hear from some of the most important candidates for one of the most important positions in Fulton County. And in order for us to have the kind of nonpartisan debate that we want to see occur today, we'd like to give you a few of the ground rules that we have. It is nonpartisan, and so we, we, we want you to applaud, encourage the different candidates when, when they make points for you, but we do not allow for there to be signs or placards or T-shirts supporting any one candidate. Okay to wear buttons, but no signs or placards in the sanctuary. We would ask that those be taken out. The candidates will, will be giving, given a set of questions that will be established by the, these fine journalists that we have, and they'll go over that more, but we want you to participate as well. So we are going to ask any who are interested in asking a question. We have some people that'll be walking through with three by five cards, and they will give you a card if you have a question that you'd like to ask. If you would write it down and turn those cards back into them, then we will review those and turn them over to the journalists before the end of the session so that they can use some of those questions directly in, in this forum. So you'll, so if anyone has, wants to ask a question, please raise your hands now, and we'll have some folks come, come by and give you an opportunity to write your question down. We'll then come back, come back through and pick those up, and then we will vet those so we can hear directly from you. So with that, that's, that's the conclusion. We have a couple more up here. And we are close to beginning on time, so, oh, okay, we have a couple more over here. And then we're gonna hear from a, a dynamic lady who has done extraordinary things in, in the community. Oh, yeah, I'm talking about her. You, you don't need to point. That's why I'm saying all of this, who's done things in the community and corporate America, and we're just proud to have her here with us today, Ms. Sadie Denard.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I wanted to just take a minute and let you know, Stan, good to see you. Wanted to just take a minute and let you know the people who have worked hard to plan today's event. It's not every day that you see a collaboration like this take place, but the issues are so important, we knew we needed to come together and bring you together for this conversation today. So, the Concern Black Clerity of Metropolitan Atlanta, Communities United for Justice, the Atlanta Chapter of the Links Incorporated, the League of Women Voters, Atlanta Fulton County Chapter, Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity at Alumda Chapter, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Inc., Kappa Omega Chapter, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, I'm gonna get tongue tied, I can tell, New Alumda Omega Chapter, Kappa Alpha Phi Fraternity, Atlanta Alumni Chapter, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, Tau, Tau Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Atlanta Alumni Chapter, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Atlanta Suburban Alumni Chapter, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Lambda Sigma Chapter, and Iota Phi Theta Fraternity, Epsilon Omega Chapter. Would you give us all a big round of applause? Thank you, and thank you for coming out today.
My name is John Varner. I'm a member of Omega Psi Phi Tau Chapter. At this time, I will be introducing Angelique Proctor. Angelique Proctor is a reporter for Fox News. Before joining Fox Five in 1994, this Atlanta native shared her journalism skills in Jacksonville, Florida, Cincinnati, Ohio, Macon, Georgia, and Albany, Georgia. But for today's topic, it's very appropriate that Angelique Proctor is, began her career starring a program called Lawmakers on the Georgia Public Television. Angelique is a graduate of UGA's Henry W. Grady College of Journalism and Mass Communication, Georgia Bulldogs in the house. And she's a past officer of the Atlanta Association of Black Journalists, as well as a member of the Links, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Kappa Omega, and the Chums. Did we mention that she's a courageous cancer survivor, and she is. When she's not on the air, Angelique volunteers at the Children's Restoration Network and the Sadie G. May's Nursing Home. She lives in Atlanta with her husband and her three daughters. Let's show lots of love to Atlanta-owned Angelique Proctor. And we also have Stan Washington, who is standing in for Don O'Suggs. Mr. Washington, can you come up and tell a little bit things about you? I didn't have anything. I know you're standing in, so I'm...
Is this on?
That's on. I didn't want to do you no dis, uh, justice.
I don't have an extensive career like my fellow native Atlanta. I'm a native.
Okay.
Turner High School, Clark Atlanta University, co-founded the Atlanta Association of Black Journalists, and also was one of the founding members of WCLK Radio, which is celebrating 50 years this year, so please tune in. I've been a four times the editor at the Atlanta Voice, and I'm currently the editor at large, so we'll stop it right there.
All right, everybody give him a round of applause. Thank you.
(inaudible) More applause. (inaudible)
I was just, I was just gonna say that we should applaud you guys because you're offering yourselves up for public service, and with that, sometimes comes a lot of criticism and scrutiny, and so we appreciate you being willing. And I was telling Stan while I went on, he told me it was.
There you go. Okay. Whoa. I was just commending the candidates for offering themselves up for public service because it sometimes comes with scrutiny and criticism, and so you all are willing to do it. We appreciate it and represent our community, and so we want to begin on a very, very positive note, and we're gonna end on a positive note. And so we would like to start, we have you all in alphabetical order, by the way. We want to start with opening statements. If you all will introduce yourselves to the citizens of Fulton County, and we do have a timekeeper, we're asking two minutes or less. So we'll go ahead and start with Kirk Beasley.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me? First of all, I would like to say thank you all for putting on this forum to allow the candidates to introduce ourselves. I'm Kirk Beasley. I am a candidate for sheriff of Fulton County. My career in law enforcement with the sheriff's office began in 1994 under Sheriff Jacqueline Barrett. It concluded when I retired in 2017 upon Sheriff Ted Jackson. Throughout those years, I lot, I had a vast learning experience. And so on any given day, I was responsible for 3,000 people or more at the Fulton County jail. I have managed a multimillion dollar budget. I am a successful business owner, having owned a smoothie king for 11 years. I have saved the taxpayers millions of dollars, Fulton County taxpayers, having spearheaded and led the inmate advocacy unit. I am fiscally and financially sound. I have knowledge of every division, every division within the sheriff's office. I've sat at that table with other executive commanders where we discuss strategic plans and goals to propel the sheriff's office forward. I've worked with the law enforcement agencies, the justice partners, and other stakeholders as we work to reduce crime, to reduce, reduce the jail population, reduce recidivism, keeping it from coming back to jail, as well as to bring awareness to mental illness. I am Kirk Beasley, the lady for the job. I have worn my opponent's shoes, but they have not worn mine. The sheriff is over there saying, "I haven't been sheriff, but give me a few days. I'm coming for you." Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I first like to say that he who boasts, boasts in the name of the Lord. I am James J.T. Brown. I'm a Morehouse graduate, and I went from Morehouse to the jailhouse. I received a master's degree in administration and went on to complete a doctoral program in management and organizational leadership, where I'm all but ABD. I served with the Fulton County Sheriff's Office for 30 years, where I worked in every division, the jail, the courts, and the law enforcement division. I also own a small business where I have led for 19 years through three crises, the crisis of 210, the crisis of COVID, and here recently, the film industry's crisis, and we survived. I'm a proud member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, where I've served in the community for a number of years. I'm married to Monisha Brown and have a son, London Brown, who also is gonna be a freshman at Morehouse College this year. I call myself a law enforcement CEO because right now, the sheriff's office is in what a crisis, and you need someone who can handle the budget and also the law enforcement part of the sheriff's office. Because remember, I'm just not running for jailer or anything like that. I'm running to be the sheriff, and you have to know the whole operations of the sheriff's department. Remember, I am James J.T. Brown, a law enforcement executive. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Joyce Farmer, and I'm ready to serve as your next sheriff of Fulton County. I have over 37 years of law enforcement experience. I actively served 30 years after retiring from the Fulton County Sheriff's Office. I am now currently working with the East Point PD Police Department. I was born and raised in Macon, Georgia. I've been a resident of Fulton County for over 18 years. As we all know, that our sheriff's office is struggling right now. The spending is out of control, the morale is at an all-time low. Inmates has lost their lives due to neglect and mismanagement. We're losing officers at a dangerous rate faster than we can feel the positions. Everybody's talking about we need a new jail. What we need first is a new sheriff, and I'm here to serve as that new sheriff. Again, I'm Joyce Farmer. Electjoycefarmer.com, excuse me, electjoyce.us is my website for more information. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Y'all invited us here, right? My name is Patrick LeBott, and I am certainly honored to be the 28th sheriff of Fulton County. I didn't arrive here, I'm from here. Went to school right next door, from Frederick Douglass High School to Clark and Lamb University. My matriculation was a little different. I worked 11 at night to seven in the morning at the city jail and went to school every day till I completed my degree. But I got two degrees, one in real life, working in a facility that then had to be rebuilt, and another one that focused on how we treat people. Listen, we're gonna do a lot of fact checking. It's not the sheriff's department, it's the sheriff's office. Let us be clear. I applaud everyone that gives themselves up for this office. Out of 1.2 million people, to Angelique's point, it is hard to serve, and there's a lot of criticisms that come, criticisms that come along with it. But the sheriff's office was a hot mess when I got there. Let me be clear. We can talk about deaths, one death is too many, but ultimately, there were 40 that preceded, preceded my administration. When I got there, there was something called Taser Tuesday. The culture of the sheriff's office was a mess. So I came up with 30, 30 years, 31 years in law enforcement, but the thing we focused on was how we treated people over at the City of Atlanta Department of Corrections. So when I was a sergeant, I did what sergeants do. When I was a lieutenant, I did what lieutenants do. In 2010, I was appointed by then Mayor Reed as chief of the City of Atlanta Department of Corrections. And so to that extent, we focused on how do we change lives? And as we continue this conversation, I hope it be robust, I hope it be honest, but understand, I need your help, starting tomorrow with early voting, to help me continue to fight for Fulton County.
Thank you all. We want to begin by talking about the sheriff's actual role. The sheriff acts as the chief law enforcement officer in the county. The duties include overseeing the operations and administration of the jail, providing security for the courtrooms and the judges, and providing warrant services, special operations, investigative units, and conducting delinquent property tax sales. The sheriff also retains the authority to intervene in any law enforcement effort within the county where he or she feels compelled to do so. In Fulton County, the sheriff must also bring a CEO approach to the role, as the office manages an annual budget of more than $140 million, nearly 875 staff members, and must engage in a wide range of people, including elected officials, community leaders, and most importantly, the citizens of Fulton County. Now that we know more about the sheriff's role and have met the candidates, let's get to the first question. Stan?
All right, thank you. With authority comes accountability. Everyone needs someone to keep them in check. For many communities, large and small, Citizen Review Board served that purpose. Fulton County has a very active board. Describe how that relationship can and should work best to serve county residents. That question is open to all of you. Who wants to go first?
Well, sir, I served on the grievance board for Fulton County for two years. I had to work with the county commissioners and the county managers. So, as sheriff of Fulton County, I will work with the community. I will work with civic leaders and other faith-based organizations, and I will ask for their input in some policy procedures that I will put in place to make sure that I am doing it correctly, or what the citizens want besides what law enforcement should be doing. So I can, um, am gonna work closely with the community and boards.
I would be honored to work with the advisory board. I would be honored to work with the community. I will open up my ears and listen attentively. I would get answers when answers are requested, and I will listen and get back to the constituents in and all information that they need to know. So if there is not an advisory board already with, that has been set to work with the sheriff's department directly, then we will create one, because I need someone to give me feedback to keep me in check, to make sure that I'm doing the things that I am hired to do, or I'm elected to do by the people of Fulton County.
Okay, what I will do, I will implement, if it's not already implemented, I will implement advisory board, and those individuals and members will be members of the community. So that way, they can bring in the solutions or concerns that they have, and they can also be a part to oversee, to ensure that the sheriff's office is operating the way they should be. I want to bring different organizations, get involved with the community, and bring them aboard because we need, is organizations already exist in these different communities. So I need to, for all of us to come together to save our youth. I want to deal with the mental health, educating the community in reference to mental health. So I will be reaching out to those organizations and experts to come in, and we can all work together. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Let me provide some clarity. There's a difference between a Citizens Review Board and a Citizens Advisory Board. And so having worked with Atlanta's Citizen Review Board, those types of issues that come up allow you then more insight as to what they're reviewing, how the policies may or may need to change, may or may not need to change. But again, here's something to focus on. We're not a sheriff's department, we're a sheriff's office, and that in and of itself has its own responsibilities. So for the ones that don't know, and let me help, right? We started a SCAT team, Sheriff's Citizen Advisory Team, and what we did was we focused on bringing all the naysayers in. So we brought anyone that had anything negative to say in about the sheriff's office. What does that mean? There were people from the Public Defender's Office that had some concerns. There were some people that, from PAD, the Pre-Arest Diversionary Center, that had some concerns. And what we did was partnered with them, and we gave the Public Defender's Office, the Solicitor, our Solicitor damages office, as well as PAD, space at the back door. And so we focused on getting people out and getting them the services they need prior to even court the next day. So let me give you an example. Since October, since we started this, PAD has gotten over 100 people out before they have gone to court, provided those services, and most of those are misdemeanor based.
Thank you. If you were given an unlimited budget and more trained staff than you could ever imagine, describe two long-term changes you would recommend to address the jail's day-to-day operations. Let's start with Sheriff LeBott.
So first of all, that's, that's a bit stretch, that's a stretch. Now, I've only asked for $211 million so that we could really be forward-thinking about what that looks like. We will not arrest our way of, out of the problems that we have, but more important is we have to leverage technology. And so what the Fulton County Board of Commissioners did, and I have to applaud them for this, they recognized that the 30-year-old facility that we had is out of life cycle. Now, what does that mean? That means that if your home was 80% out of life cycle, it would cost more. We did a 12-month, actually a 15-month, $1.2 million jail feasibility study. It came back and it said, these are professionals that went out and said 80% of the jail is out of life cycle. That means if your home was out of life cycle, it would cost you more to rebuild or replace your, your jail than to build a new replacement facility. So people say, do you need a new jail? No, we need a replacement facility. Anytime that the plumbing is dismantled, anytime that the electrical shafts are constantly dismantled, we need those two things. We need to increase technology because we want to rest our way out of this problem, and we need to focus on what a replacement facility looks like so that we can have 400 beds of mental health services, so that we can treat people in a more humane fashion. Anyone else want to add?
Can you repeat the question?
Oh, absolutely. So if you were given an unlimited budget and all the staff that you could possibly have, what are the two things that you would want to change dealing with the jail's day-to-day operations?
First, I would ensure that my personnel were taken care of. So what that entails is getting daycare on-site so my personnel could get there and wouldn't have any excuses about childcare. Next, I would want to increase their health benefits because I want to make sure my team is healthy. So I would invest in my most valuable resource, which is my people. Next, I would look at the infrastructure of the organization. I was in the transfer division for a number of years where I got to travel around to other agencies around the country.
So if you were given an unlimited budget and all the staff that you could possibly have, what are the two things that you would want to change dealing with the jail's day-to-day operations?
First, I would ensure that my personnel were taken care of. So what that entails is getting daycare on-site, so my personnel could get there and wouldn't have any excuses about childcare. Next, I would want to increase their health benefits, because I want to make sure my team is healthy. So I would invest in my most valuable resource, which is my people. Next, I would look at the infrastructure of the organization. I was in the transfer division for a number of years where I got to travel around to other agencies around the country, and their facilities were some of over 50 years old. And I used to ask them, how do you guys keep the upkeep so? And they said they had building maintenance. So what I would do, I would hire the best maintenance company in the United States to come in and keep our facility up to standards, up to the constitutional standards. So between keeping the upkeep of the building and my personnel, that's what I would do with that budget. Thank you.
If I had unlimited access to those funds, one thing I would like to do would be add to the jail a diversion center. A lot of the arrestees that come to the jail are people who are homeless and/or suffering from mental illness. So I would invest those funds in creating a place for them to come, so they can get the type of help they need, so that they don't end up in a jail facility. I would utilize funds also to try and make the ones that are in custody have them to leave better than the way they arrived. So invest in different programs to deter recidivism, to deter the return to custody. So that's what I would do. I would invest in people, the money that's given to me.
What I would do with unlimited, you say unlimited amount of money? Okay, I would, I would make sure that we are fully staffed. Because the staffing is part of the reason why we're where we are now. It's not so much of the jail. The jail is being torn up because there is no staff to oversee and conduct the security rounds the way they supposed to conduct the security round. That's why we're where we are today. So I would invest in ensuring that higher, dedicated, qualified individuals for the job, make sure that they are getting paid to keep from running from this job to going to other jobs. And I would make sure that the other finding would go to the maintenance of repairing the jail. I would add a facility next to it for the mental health. Remove all the mental health out of the general population, they're all in one unit. Anyone that has a medical issue from being on wheelchair, crutches, broken arm, I would move them over into this new wing. And house them over there outside of general population to ensure that they receive the treatment that they need. And while they're there, once they leave, I will make sure that the treatment continues for the mental health.
Next question. What can be done over the next six months to a year to reduce jail overcrowding? And let's look at it in the short term and the long term.
That's a good question. For long term, I'm gonna implement a crisis intervention precinct in areas in Fulton County that have the most recidivism in it. Also, in that crisis intervention precinct, the public is gonna have resources to go to. And one of the programs I'm gonna have in there is for the youth. I'm gonna have a literacy program. Because when I was in the juvenile warrant division, I used to ask the youth, why are you getting in trouble so? And they used to state to me, when I go to school, I got teased because I couldn't read. So I stated, if I ever got in charge of the sheriff's office and became sheriff, I would implement a reading program for the youth. Next is for the detainees. While they're in jail, I would have a work program for them. And the third part to that is repeat, well, not repeat defenders, but formerly detainees. I'm gonna have what's called a crisis transition center. So when they get out of jail, they can come back to that facility and have resources and get training, so they will not come back to jail. So that's my long term. The short term would be going and looking at classification system that's at the jail now. Because classification is when somebody enters the jail, and I would look at each individual case. My team would to see who is eligible to get out, because that's their first time, or because it is a misdemeanor, I sign on bond also. Thank you.
What I plan to do is being involved with the community, being involved with our youth, having programs to, well, I want to reestablish the program that they used to have, which was called Junior Deputy. I would start down as lowest kindergarten, just give them like a little fake badge to assist the teachers, so they'll go up through the program. And once they become seniors, there'll be a junior deputy. During their high school senior year, for the ones that leave school early, they can come to the sheriff's office for an internship. If they decide they want to stay there to continue the job, they will be, submit an application, and they can work in the sheriff's office. Until the age of 21, if they decide they want to be a deputy, they can transition over and apply for that, because under the age of 21, you cannot carry a weapon. So they would be either a detention officer or working in clerk's area, such as a computer operator. So as the long term, I take that as long as I'm out in the community, educating them, giving them something to do, having programs for little girls to hang out with the sheriffs, and for the males, I have a mentor for them, and we just coming together with the youths to save them, to prevent them from coming to jail. Thank you.
The question is, what would you do in the next six months to a year to reduce jail overcrowding?
What I would do in the next six months to a year to reduce jail overcrowding, number one, we will continue the duties that we've done, and I did with inmate advocacy on it. And that's we're working with the justice partners. Getting the judges involved, the case managers, probation officers, everybody makes up their justice system so that we can work to get people out of jail if their sentence says so. If they need to go to prison, then we'll work with the state system to get them transitioned to prison. I don't know if it's still in place, but once upon a time, they will have 15 days after they received a sentence, so they can be moved off to the state system. If that's not happening, we will reapply that pressure to make sure that we start that to happening again. I would go to my jail records area where the documents are kept for the detainees. I would review as many, have the staff review, people who could possibly qualify for early release based upon their sentence, their charges, and present that to the judges, and see if they would sign off and approve some releases. That's what I would do to reduce the jail population.
So once again, we're fact-checking, and certainly appreciate that. So six months from now, we will continue to do the things that we initiated over the last year and a half, two years. I created an inmate advocacy unit. The proof that I worked with anybody, I brought a former lieutenant colonel in there to help lead that program. Since she's left, we released 500 people after she left, partnering with our solicitor, partnering with our judges, partnering with anybody that wants to partner. Just last week, when we did a shakedown and we found 150 shanks, homemade knives, we also found that there were four people that had $100 bonds. The system itself is broken. And so what we have done is partnered with our judges to say, listen, if you're going to have somebody come back to stand trial, when we got there, there were 300 people, nearly 300 people, that were simply there that have come back from the state waiting to go to trial. So what we did was we put in place with our judges, you got two weeks to put those people on trial. And it's not 15 days we have to wait, it's already in place. Once a person, case is adjudicated, the state has 14 days to come get that individual. We've cut that in half. We make our own trips, we actually take the time to take people wherever they need to go. Every day, I get a call at 9 o'clock in the morning, 9 o'clock in the afternoon, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and 4:30 in the morning, so that we know who's in our facility, how they're being processed, and if there are what's called foreign holes, we take those individuals where they need to go.
Thank you. While the sheriff is a duly-elected constitutional officer, budget approval is required by the Fulton County Commission. For decades, there appears to be confusion about the sheriff's actual budget needs. What steps will or can you take to further enhance the important stakeholders' relationship between the sheriff and the commission?
Well, as I stated, I worked on the grievance board for two years for Fulton County, and I worked along with the county commissioners and the county manager. So you have to have a good working relationship with them. You're not gonna agree on everything that comes across, but I think what they're looking for is a lime item on your budget that enhances the Fulton County Sheriff's Office. So if I give them a sound budget that is pertaining to what we do constitutionally, they can't deny that. As long as they see someone who's fiscally sound managing that budget correctly in the constitution of the duties of the sheriff's office, I guarantee you, they will approve JT Brown's budget when I'm sheriff. I've already talked to some commissioners, and I'm pretty sure they are gonna approve the budget that I submit. Thank you.
What I'm going to do is make sure that your tax dollars are spent the way they should be spent. Once we're given a budget, yes, the constitutional officer can spend that, however, whatever means that they see fit. However, when they need additional funds, you have to show where you're gonna do with those funds. You can't just do what you want to do with them and expect to keep getting more. The sheriff's office, they had $146 million budget. 36 million was set aside, in the general fund was set aside just in case they need more of the 149. 20 million was sent for outsourced, which left 16 million. 5.9 million was for inmates welfare fund. 10 million was for jail repairs or renovation. So for the total year of funds that was allocated to the sheriff's office is $182 million. So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna make sure your money is spent the way it should be. If they ask them what I need it for, I'm gonna say what it's needed for, and I'm not gonna purchase anything that the sheriff's office doesn't need. I'm quite sure you all are aware of what I'm speaking of.
While the sheriff is a duly-elected officer, the commission is in charge of the budget. So how are you going to strengthen those relationships, because you have to go through the commission?
You have to strengthen all relationships by communicating, first of all. Having respect for all. Being that there have been some challenges, and the sheriff does not need approval of the commissioners to, as to how he or she spends their budget. But the sheriff needs to make purchases of things that are justifiable for the needs of the sheriff's office, so that we can show the citizens of Fulton County that we are investing the money the way in which it should be invested to better the sheriff's office, so that it does not appear to be waste of spending. And when we go to the commissioners for additional funds, I think it would be easier for them to give us those funds if we can show how we have spent previous funds correctly. Thank you.
So let me continue my civics lesson. $146 million, 80% of that is spent on personnel. Because I have worked with our Board of Commissioners, we were able to get in two and a half years a 36% pay increase for our sworn staff. That's unheard of in law enforcement. Because I have been able to work with our Board of Commissioners at a dire time, when it was necessary to say, instead of paying time and a half, we're gonna pay our team members double time to work in the most dangerous facility in the southeast. These are things that were, we inherited. And so when I say that, what do you mean, Sheriff? I say that ultimately, the previous administration didn't pay overtime. What they did was forced our team to accrue 480 hours. If you took 80 hours of vacation, they then took that away from you, couldn't make overtime. We were losing people to Cobb County, Gwinnett County, Henry County, because you couldn't make overtime. We eliminated that, working with our Board of Commissioners. Will we always agree? Absolutely not. But once that budget is ratified, it is a sheriff's responsibility to spend that on sheriff's office. It is not to continue to go back and forth. We'll have a difference of opinion, but ultimately, it's gonna take us working together to get it done. And we have to focus forward on what that looks like. Keep in mind, we started with a budget that was $125 million. Then here's the other next important piece. The jail maintenance does not belong to the sheriff's office.
Like to comment?
I was gonna say, everyone answered the question. We want to now incorporate some questions from the audience. And it's, some of them are specific. And so I have two here, where one is specifically for the sheriff, and the other one is for the three challengers. So that sounds fair enough to me. Now, bear with me as I try to read the writing. Let's start with the first question. According to open records requests, over 40 inmates died under the previous administration, with multiple cases of neglect and abuse reported. All candidates except for the current sheriff were employed by the previous administration during these incidents. Why should residents trust that you will lead better when the statistics suggest otherwise?
Let me state this. I started in 1986 with the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, and yes, I worked under six sheriffs. While we were there, the leadership planned, lead, organized, and controlled the sheriff's office. We were always understaffed, and we were always had overpopulation. But what we did was our job. During the administrations that I worked, if it was a death, it was because of unpreventable death, maybe because of a medical issue, or maybe because of suicide. But the deputies were doing their 30-minute rounds, we were doing what we supposed to do, and we managed the facility correctly. Let me give you a timeline of this present administration. In 2021, you had one death. 2022, you probably don't know this, it was 14 deaths. In 2023, we know about the 10 deaths. And here recently, it's been three deaths. That's a total of 28 deaths. Remember, under those other sheriffs, that was five previous sheriffs. So this administration has had 28 deaths.
No, no. You don't get to criticize the sheriff's office and not get a rebuttal. Fair enough, that was rules. So let me be clear, let me be clear. First of all, the inference that the women and men of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office are not doing their job should be shameful. Those women and men go in every single day knowing that lives are on the line. And ultimately- And ultimately, in this space, we have a more violent criminal that's coming to jail. More gangs than ever we thought existed in our community. We have an aging building where at any point, you can go in and find homemade knives. Remember, we took 1,500, not, not 150, 1,500 homemade knives to the board of commissioners. So understanding that the evolution of a facility, when we opened it 30 years ago, it stood better. It was the latest and greatest at the time. The infrastructure is being weaponized. And with these gang members that are internal to our facility, they're attacking each other. We have the spot shooter. We have the young lady that shot up Colony Square, got in the Uber, and then went out to the airport. We have the young man that shot up the 14th Street Medical Center. We have the worst of the worst, and they're attacking each other inside. Preventable deaths is one conversation. Those that are being weaponized are absolutely not, not at this conversation, at this point in time. We have a more violent criminal. And anyone that doesn't understand that absolutely doesn't need to be running for sheriff.
As I stated, when I retired from the sheriff's office 30 years, in my assignment, I was assigned to the housing area. Those counts that they say that were death of inmates, it was natural causes. They wasn't murder or homicide, which is going on now. So to say that, well, okay. To say that the inmates, we got gang members, that's because they're not being classified. They just putting them in there. And we're not saying that the officers are not doing their job. They are doing their job for the few that's there. However, if they was doing their jobs, Mr. Thompson wouldn't have been found weeks later with them bugs. So, so where are the, where are the officers? Why was he there those amount of time? I was a floor officer, so I know how it's supposed to be done. You conduct your security rounds to make sure everybody's okay. If you got gang members, you separate them. You don't just put everybody in a cell and just leave them there. So it's more going on that they want to say, but those murders was, it's murders now, homicide. Back then, it was natural causes. I found inmate myself that died in his sleep. Yes, that's a death. I've seen inmates, they hung itself. However, it was clear because we conducted our security rounds.
So do you want the facts? Because here's the problem.
We heard from you.
Here's the problem.
Okay, Ms. Beasley, Ms. Beasley.
So what I want to say is that I don't want to minimize any of the deaths that have happened, whether they were over the past 40 years or within the last 30. What we need to do as the sheriff's office is stop the deaths. We have had a lot of deaths over the past three years, more than what we've had over the previous administrations. And so what we need to do, what I believe we need to do, we need to get the staffing level up, staffing levels up, so that we can make those security rounds, engage with the detainees, keep them unbalanced, so that they don't know when we're coming. Perform those, um, cell checks. Going in and making sure that we don't have things that they can use weapons. We've just got to beef up things. We've got to do things more readily. We've got to become smarter than the ones that are in the jail. We can't allow them to control the jail. We have to control the people who are living at the jail. And that will reduce some of these deaths that we're seeing.
Sheriff, let me, um, let me ask you, Sheriff. What's the current staff number? And where does it really need to be if it's not at the, at the level that it should be?
So really quickly, and thank you. Right now, we're over 834 individuals. We have hired 700 individuals in the last 200 and, last two and a half years. Ultimately, right now, we have 140 vacancies. When we came in, we had close to 200 vacancies. It is a rough time to be in law enforcement. For anybody to believe that there are almost 300 or 400 vacancies at the Atlanta Police Department and that that actually translates into where we are absolutely does not understand the ebb and flow, what that looks like. And here's what's equally important. And this is what I've been fighting for year after year after year. We are working on a staffing analysis that dates back to 2015. And so I've asked the board of commissioners, listen, we need to level set, understand what that looks like, so that we know what the proper staffing looks like. We've partnered with a third-party vendor to come in, because at one point, we couldn't even staff the towers. There's 17 towers in, in the facility itself, 78 zones. And we need to be able to staff the towers. So now, as of last week, we fully staffed the towers because we worked with the board of commissioners to make that happen. But to be very specific, we're down almost 100, 150 officers, well, total. But less than 40 sworn officers, less than 50 sworn officers in terms of deputies and detention officers.
Okay, Sheriff, this is the question that's specific for you. What percentile of responsibility do you personally take regarding the overall condition of the Fulton County Jail to include the maintenance of, and I know you said you weren't in charge of maintenance, the staff shortages, the contraband, and the repeated offense of murder behind the walls? And if taking any responsibility for any part, why should I be willing to give my vote? And if I do, what plan of action do you have in place to address these issues? Please address each individually.
Okay. So first, let's, let's go back and, and really understand and unpack this, right? So we spend $300,000 a month on maintenance. And that's not the "we" from the perspective of the sheriff's office. That is the Fulton County. It's called DREAM, the Department of Real Estate and Asset Management. When we came in, the facility again was out of life cycle. What does that look like? That means that as we continue to rehab these units, people continue to tear them up. And this is one thing that, to say that we have gangs. But what people tend to understand and don't give our youth enough credit. And that is, just because you're locked up doesn't mean you're not smart. So what ends up happening is these gangs continue to morph. So where we put Bloods, and I'll use Bloods and Crips as an example. Where we put them in the same area thinking that they're coexisting, because on the streets, that's what they do. Then they become Bloods 100, Bloods 200, Bloods 300, and they start to fight each other. Now, going back to maintenance and understanding, we created, working with the board of commissioners, working with DREAM, we created a $16.5 million jail blitz project. We shut down a complete zone. We completely fixed it, modernized it. And again, we will not get out of this without the use of technology. So this is what I tell anyone that will, will sit still. It takes a long time to turn a ship around. You have 30 years of neglect. 30 years, decades, and this is not a new problem. I need your help to continue to fight for Fulton County as we get ready to move forward. And certainly, Angelique, if that's something I missed on one of those questions in checkmark. I know you'll check me.
Well, listen, do you take personal responsibility?
It is all personal. It is absolutely personal. That's why I get up at 4:30 in the morning and talk to my commanders. It is all personal. That's why we created an, so again, while the building is not ours to perform the maintenance, every other month, every commander in the sheriff's office goes from the top of the jail to the bottom. When we did it the first time, we found 1,000 doors that were not working. We found over 600 toilets that were not working. 350 sinks that were not working. But we want to create a humane environment. So it is all personal. That's why every other day, right? We are having command staff meetings at the jail. Or every morning, we have a 9:30 command staff call so that we can focus on, it's, it's personal to me. Here's the other thing we got to keep in mind. When you have an environment like ours, unlike Cobb County, Henry County, Gwinnett County, you are saddled with whoever's there when you get there. Meaning, you can't bring in your own command staff. So we've slowly been able to bring in, redefine what that looks like, and more importantly, start to change the culture of the sheriff's office. We changed our mission statement from a, a three or four paragraphs to one word, and that's service. And the same thing I do every single time I talk to our community. My telephone number is 404-859-0237. You can call me, and you do call me, right? And so can any citizen out here. Because our job is to be responsive.
All right, we're going to, we're going to have to wrap up this part of the session. But I wanted to ask one more quick question for all of you to sort of answer. Are we, do we need to look at the issues of the sheriff's office in a different light and in terms of, let's use the example of traffic. You can't say that Atlanta, everybody talking about Atlanta traffic, but the traffic in Atlanta is not just Atlanta's problem. It's a metro-wide problem. Do we need to look at the issues at the jail in a more metro-wide, uh, I, I guess, for more metro-wide solutions? And then with more partnerships with, say, for instance, other counties and the state, for instance? So because it's, the problem seems to be more larger than just the county dealing with this. When crime is just not one, you know, county's problem. It's a metro-wide problem. So do we need to take a broader approach and look at this?
Well, sir, I hope I answered your question with this. Like I stated, one of the ways to combat crime is start with the youth and the neighborhoods. That's why I want to implement the crisis intervention centers. Now, I'm a crisis intervention officer. That's why I was speaking on crisis intervention centers. Because when I was out there and people were in a crisis, it was something that could be controlled if they had the resources. So what we need to do is go to these new neighborhoods and provide them with resources and help them. Uh, we used to have, in my pocket, Corey Henry is back there, he was my partner when I was in the warrant division. We used to have cards where we could call different grassroots organizations for people when they, when times are need. 211 is one, um, organization, United Way. We used to utilize them a lot. Um, the Shelter Downtown, Atlanta Union Center, they knew us quite well. Because we used to drop off individuals over there for help, whether it be for food or to get clothes. So what it needs to start is with partnership with organization, grassroots organizations, and faith-based organizations. But you need a leader like me, James T. Brown. He has done the job and knows where to go and implement these programs. And know where to go in these neighborhoods where it is needed. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Farmer.
I just want, I just want to be sure about your question. I thought you was talking about traffic.
No, 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 no. I said, using traffic as an example, it's not just an Atlanta problem or Fulton County problem. It's becoming a metro-wide problem that people are focusing on now. So do we need to look at the issues and the problems of the sheriff's office or what they have to deal with from a more broader scope?
I believe, like I said, getting involved with the community, like you say, it's, why it's caught, it's everywhere. But if we focus on the communities, get involved with them, giving the youth something to do, um, educating the community as far as how to prevent some crime. Because like, some ladies might leave their purse on their car. Well, I'm just running here right quick. It's people standing by waiting on you to leave your car. And then they bust out your window. So sometimes, if we educate the community, then letting them know that can help us preventing crime if we all just work together.
Okay, uh, I know we, we getting the rap real quick. Any comments about, you don't have to answer if you don't want to?
Allow me an opportunity to say something. So, yes, I think it is a metro-wide problem. And I think we need to work with police agencies, neighborhoods, churches, justice partners, and everybody. Get everybody involved to try and help reduce the crimes and the different problems that we're having in Atlanta, Fulton County.
Look, crime has no jurisdictional boundaries. Ultimately, as your sheriff, we already do this. We focus, we have sworn in of the other 14 or 15 cities inside Fulton County. We've created a force multiplier. So there are Atlanta police departments that can go beyond their, or members that can go beyond their jurisdictions. East Point, Johns Creek, et cetera. So that we can create this force multiplier. But we also partner with the FBI, the Secret Service, US Marshal Services. We have members on each one of those task forces. And to that extent, we have captured over 25 of Fulton County's most wanted individuals. So this force multiplier, the analogy you gave of traffic is one that we will not both solve with just personnel power, but we're going to have to leverage technology. So we're using license plate readers. We're using cameras in neighborhoods that we can partner with neighborhoods, but creating this force multiplier so that we can go after these bad actors. The other piece of this is, when we took over the administration, there are 18,000 warrants that need to be executed. That means a judge signed a warrant that said, this is a bad actor. So we're, we're fumbling and going through these, these, these warrants, some poorly written, and, and really trying to figure out what bad actors to go get so that we can hold people accountable. Crime is down. Crime is down in Atlanta. And I tell the police chief every day when I talk to him, it's down because of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office and the partnerships that we've created. So we've created a traffic unit. We created a fugitive team. We've created those very resources to make Fulton County safer.
Thank you. So we've come to the close of our forum. We're going to give all of you 90 seconds to give us your closing remarks. Left to right.
Once again, I'm Kirk Beasley, candidate for sheriff of Fulton County. As your sheriff, I will ensure that I take care of the duties for which I'm responsible. Starting with maintaining and ensuring that the jail is safe and secure for the people who live there. Ensure that the courts are run properly, that it's secured. And we will execute those warrants, starting on some of those warrants the sheriff, uh, LeVatt will leave behind for me to take over and handle. And so I want to be your next sheriff. I know what my job is. I can't speak on past 2017, but when I was the Assistant Chief Jailer, we did not have the high number of deaths. We did not have the detainees traveling through the walls, getting into the other areas. We had better control. We did not have as many man-made weapons that's being presented and shown of today. So I want to return with what I left there and move the sheriff's office forward. We want to restore integrity. And we need to, and we will regain control of the Fulton County Jail.
I am James JT Brown. And what I want the public to remember is that I am a law enforcement CEO. Meaning, I can do the law enforcement side. I've worked in the jail division, the court division, and the law enforcement division. And also, I can manage a, almost a quarter-billion-dollar budget. Because I am a small business owner, and I've led through a crisis. Right now, the sheriff's office is in a crisis. They keep on saying, build a new jail. That's projected to be 2028. We need the problems to be solved right now. The crisis is at the jail now with individuals dying. So we can't wait for eight years. I am a law enforcement CEO. Running the sheriff's office is like running a city. You need someone with mirror-like qualities to come in and manage each division, each unit there. So remember, I have done the job. I'm the only candidate up here also who has worked all three divisions and have gotten awards running in each of those divisions. And also trained personnel in each one of those divisions. So I was a field training officer and a training officer. So that's what I want you to remember. James JT Brown, law enforcement CEO who knows how to run the sheriff's office responsibly and constitutionally. Thank you.
I am Joyce Farmer. I want you to also remember, if you can't be true to yourself, don't expect for them to be true to you. I'm going to bring back the integrity to our sheriff's office. I'm going to hold myself, and I want you all to hold me accountable for my actions. I'm going to remain transparent.
I'm gonna remain transparent. If any citizens of Fulton County want to speak with their sheriff, just call the sheriff's office and set an appointment. There will be a day set aside strictly for the citizens of Fulton County to come in and speak with their sheriff. I'm ready to serve you as your sheriff. I'm gonna make sure people are treated fairly, such as the employees. That's why there's no employees there because of the way they're being treated by management. I was once there. I know how it operates. But once you treat people right, they will want mine coming to work. And I'm gonna make sure that the employees' needs are taken care of because they're the one that's doing the work. Again, Joyce Farmer for sheriff, please vote starting tomorrow. Website, electjoys.us. Thank you.
First, let me start by thanking the Divine Nine. Anytime we can have a robust conversation around what matters to our community and Divine Nine is there, we certainly want to be a large part of that. To the members of my fraternity, the Kappa Alpha Phi fraternity incorporated, yo, we gotta throw that in there. We want to make sure we don't leave that out. Ultimately, here's where we are. It's a clear choice. It's a clear choice. Your sheriff, your Fulton County sheriff, has helped create an environment after, again, I tell people all the time, you manage messes and you fix problems. We've been managing one thousand one hundred and two hundred, one thousand two hundred and ninety-five days since I was sworn in. Here's what I want you to do. If you're honest with yourself, look at that deputy in the back, look at that deputy right there, tell them thank you for the job they do every single day. And understand that the women and, women and men of the Fulton County Sheriff's Office want nothing but what's best for you as you are who we serve. I'm excited about our future as a sheriff's office, but it will take you to help me to continue to fight for our sheriff's office, to continue to fight for Fulton County. So as I leave you with this, understand our, our future's in fast forward. We have an opportunity to continue to be the number one sheriff's office in the country. Tomorrow, Patrick Labatt, reelect Patrick Labatt for Fulton County Sheriff, please early vote. And if nothing else, give my wife an early birthday gift on May twenty-first. That's her birthday. Because she want me out the house just like y'all want me in the jailhouse. I appreciate you. Thank you all.
Well, let me personally thank each of you for even wanting to do the job because it is not a glamorous job and it's not a job that you can even, well, you can give it to me even with the highest salary in the state. So thank each one of you for wanting to step up and do it, to, to wanting to serve. So thank you.
Good evening. If you're part of our partner groups, please quickly come up to the front for a quick group photo, quickly. Let's give a round of applause to our candidates one more time. The next forum is gonna start here shortly, so if you need a few minutes to check your messages, reach out to a friend, tell your friends to tune in to Atlanta Brouhaha Seventh Day Atlanta's Church on YouTube and it's streaming live. And let's see, don't want to miss it, let them know.
Thank you again for coming.
How are you?
I'm good. The queen is at home.
I've heard that I asked you about it. When you all have something, let me know.
I got it.
Gonna take my knife?
Yeah.
Eight five. Five eight one. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Right. Judy is still calling. You thought you were gonna...
It's my husband.
Hey, how are you?
Hello.
Yeah, how are you? Yeah, but met before.
Where?
You met her parents at the police ship.
I met, we didn't do the, um, Daggone's Hill.
No, that was, you met her parents at police ship.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, your parents were at a shore.
And your father was your mother.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I think she was there somewhere.
Oh, good.
I don't hear. To get together like one supporter from the waiting room. So there's a section.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are ready to now begin our forum. We need to start getting people in place.
Well, that's not in that fall, that's, that's what we meant. Yeah, but that's...
We were thinking about really more audience questions.
At what point do you want to stop? We need to see if it all... So let's, let's, we need to look at the district, look at the district's question.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can touch it. I guess it's great.
Starting.
We had to leave, so we're gonna finish right here. Just welcome right back and then, uh, I share a thing. We have a little time to use and we'll...
Well, I need to ask the questions first. I need to ask one.
Okay, okay. Do you want to do this and we're in charge of me?
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah.
Let me get this right. A lot of things. Four or five minutes. So what time are we gonna start?
Couple minutes. Yes, if you're ready to ask.
If we could all take our seats, we're about to start and, and we'll also be taking more audience questions for this forum. So anyone that would like to ask a question from the floor, please, we have some folks walking around with, with, with card, three by five cards. Just raise your hand and we'll allow you to enter a question and we will funnel those to the journalists. We want, be able to ask all the questions and please try to make them very brief and succinct as possible. Try not to do too many multiple parts to the question and that will make it easier for us to get through them. We're gonna try to do several more than we were able to get through in the, in the first candidate forum. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, everybody, can we all give a warm round of applause for our candidates for the, uh...
Let, let them applaud you, let them applaud you, please. I'd like to make an announcement. So, me and my, my opponent and my neighbor, like, District Six...
This, this is not a... We have journalists here to ask the questions. Okay, so, are you planning to...
We're, we're not gonna stay. Our, our, the coming has not come, and we think it's disrespectful to you guys, that the coming has not come. So, we... Thank you as well.
Thank you very much.
I'm known for being in the community, I appreciate you all, and I'll see you all in the community. Thank you. My name's Ali Carter. I can, I'll, I'll stay here outside and we can have a discussion. I'll talk to every single one of the constituents you provide. I'll stay here for all the evening, I'll be right outside. Thank you so much. This is a political floor, uh, to, to kind of, uh, to set things up, so, we're not gonna fall for that. But, uh, I'm here to talk, although, you are having other, uh, debates, please invite us to the...
Thank, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, uh, that's unfortunate that they don't wanna participate this evening, uh, and that will conclude, uh, this evening. She, she also said that she was not going to participate. She is not participating, okay? Neither of the other two candidates showed up, uh, and therefore, that will conclude our forum for this evening.
I was just gonna say, just to make sure you all aware, we invited all candidates, and so, we gave everybody ample opportunity to, to come to this event. And it's up to all candidates to determine if they want to, in their best interests, to come here, to have the public to hear what they have to say. So, we wanna make sure you all aware of that. Thank you.
Our voting starts tomorrow, keep in mind who comes out, who shows up for you to put themselves in front of you. It's your, your vote that counts. Make your voices heard. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Let's give our journalists another round of applause. Let's give all our partners a round of applause. Thank you so much.
All right. No, we're just gonna pick up a couple of more votes here.
Yes, sir. All right, remember, appreciate you, thank you so much. So, we switched organizations? Right, I'm so glad. We did.
No, I'm just, uh, I, I ran for... I honestly...
And did you decide?
Well, I got enough answers, probably.
I'm sorry.
Has anybody raised any money? That's probably bad, because Pat's the only one who sent me any mail.
Really? Where do you live?
I mean, I live in Fulton, but I'm just saying, like, so, Kurt Beasley told me she made $1,000, nothing in Fulton, right? But, they have the most...
Excuse, excuse me, um, in, in, in the confusion, uh, can I have your attention, please? In, in the confusion, in the confusion, we wanna bring, uh, we, we have a candidate that, that does want to talk to us tonight, and it was my mistake in the confusion as we were dealing with the other candidate, uh, that we made the assumption that she did not wanna participate either. Uh, so, we wanna give her an opportunity to, um, share some time with us. Uh, if, if the journalists would like to ask her a few questions, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna stay here and give her some time, uh, because she has taken the time out of her schedule to come before you, and we want you to hear from a candidate that has showed up, that wants to share with you her vision, uh, for this district. Come, come on, Sierra. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, Sierra Anderson, uh, commission candidate. Let's give her a round of applause for staying.
Well, we thank you, uh, so much for staying with us, and, uh, we're going to make it a, a little briefer, but we are delighted to hear from anybody who wants to serve. So, we are going to begin by allowing you to give us an introduction, two minutes of who you are and why you want to be elected.
Um, hello, everyone, my name is Sierra Anderson. Um, I decided to run for, um, Fulton County Commissioner because I feel like it's something that I just need to do. I was raised in this community. I was actually adopted by my next door neighbor. Um, being adopted by my next door neighbor gave me the firsthand experience about what community is actually about. Uh, prior to me running, I've always been in the community. I have a nonprofit organization, uh, that focuses on substance abuse, gun violence, uh, mentorship. Uh, we're really heavy in the schools about youth. For me, I decided to run because it's just time for somebody who's been here. I know what it looked like, from Calmington Road to Bankhead, Cascade, MLK, Adamsville, you name it. I know what these streets looked like when I was growing up, and it does not look the same. That's a problem for me. It's a problem for me to see the same daycare that we used to walk my siblings to, to be boarded up for over fifteen years. That's a problem for me. It's a problem for me to see homelessness, uh, the homeless rate rising, and they're sleeping all over Atlanta, not just in downtown Atlanta. That's a problem for me. It's a problem for me to see schools now, um, schools not getting what they need exactly in order for them to flourish. That's a problem for me. To be able to not to leave, to have to leave outside of two eighty-five to go to another mall and not just stay where Greenbrier is, that's a problem for me. So, I'm running because I am, um, I, I do feel like they need a voice, a voice that has been in this community.
Thank you. We wanna begin by talking a little bit about the county commissioner's actual role. Counties carry out locally a variety of state programs and policies, including collecting taxes, overseeing elections, conducting courts of law, and providing healthcare services. County commissioners are the county's top policymakers, supervising the county's management and administration. Commissioners are elected members of a county's legislative branch. Commissioners oversee the management and administration of the county, representing county interests at the state and federal levels, participating in long-range planning and managing the county budgets and finances. The Fulton Commission is comprised of seven members, six district or regional commissioners, and the chair, who serves in an at-large capacity. So, that is, uh, the background on the role. Now, Mr. Carter, you gonna participate?
Yes, I will.
So, then, may we get an opening statement from you, uh, two minutes or less?
Okay, wonderful. Hello, everyone, my name is Ali Carter, and I'm running for Fulton County Commissioner of District Six. Now, I just wanna start by apologizing for the, what just happened before. But, I really do love the community, and I was disrespected as a community member, knowing that my representative was not here today to speak to you all, because I was so excited for the last two days to be here with you all. And just like I was excited for the six years that I worked for the city of Atlanta as Director of Constituent Services for Post Three at Large, and then Chief of Staff for Post Three at Large as well, and as Director of Constituent Services, I got the opportunity to go to all the MPUs, A through Z. I got an opportunity to go to several, uh, neighborhood associations and homeowner associations, and sit in living rooms and talk to the community, and I fell in love with Fulton County. I fell in love with the city of Atlanta, and people knew that they could call me, and they knew that they could get stuff done. And I really just wanna continue to do that. Through that, I built some great relationships with elected officials and got an opportunity to wo- work with quite a few of them, and I can't wait to get back to that, and I think that that's what's missing. We need good government, we need good representatives. We wanna be proud of our representatives. There was a time when we were able to, we knew who our representatives were because they were on our grandmother's wall. That, that's our president, that's the governor, and that's the state rep. But, we don't do that anymore because we're not proud of our representatives, and I wanna make you proud of your representative. That's why I'm running for Fulton County Commissioner of District Six, Ali Carter. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, Stan, you've got the first question.
I would like to hear from both of you, if you are elected to office, what would be your first top two priorities, uh, issues that you would like to address, starting with you, Ms. Anderson?
Um, my, the first priority would be to, to set a date with the county manager, to go over the budget, to, to review what the, I, I know what the budget actually entail this time, but I will set an appointment, so, I will be ahead of the curve come January to know what it is that we need to do and what's needed within the community. The second thing, um, I've never heard it, I've never seen it done before, but I want an intervention, and allow me to explain. Um, I want an intervention because it's too much of a disconnect within the county commissioners. At the end of, at the end of the day, we service Fulton County, whether you in one, two, three, four, five, or six. Fulton County is what matters, and we need to be able to get along with one another. So, whatever the personal grievances are, we need to come, that needs to come to some type of head, and we need to understand what it is that we're actually there, um, to do.
Mr. Carter?
I definitely agree. I definitely agree with Dr. Anderson, um, that there is a, um, communication issue, and that we do need to work together. And the first thing that I would do would be to set up meetings with the mayors of the four cities that exist in, within District Six, which is East Point College Park, the city of Atlanta, and South Fulton. I would meet with those mayors, we will identify what are their top three things that they're facing and the issues that concern their community. I would, after those meetings, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, I lost thought. Um, so, I would have those meetings, and then, after that, I would meet with my commissioners and really identify what has been the issue and why we haven't been able to get things done. I would go over previous legislation that I feel, that I have researched with my team, that I feel and would like to identify and reamend, or, uh, simpler words, change because it may be broken, and then, work with organizations to identify policies that they've been working on that they would like to bring to the county and find a way to implement those policies that serve the citizens, that, that benefit the citizens in which I serve. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's talk a bit about the glaring healthcare inequities that exist in Fulton County, specifically North County versus South County. And the question is, how can you, as a member of the commission, get a hospital on the South Side?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So, we're talking about healthcare inequities, and particularly, uh, we've had hospitals to close. So, if you were a member of the Fulton County Commission, how would you get, uh, or attempt to get a hospital on the South Side? You wanna take it first, Mr. Carter?
Sure, I'll take it. So, I think the one thing that's not happening, people, we're not talking to each other. Governments aren't talking to each other. The state is not talking to the county, the county's not talking to the state, city's not talking to the county, vice versa, vice versa. One thing that I was able to work on some policy with, uh, Councilmember Dickens, uh, was policy that implemented a committee where the police, the Atlanta Public Schools, and City Council met quarterly, where they discussed issues that involved all of them, whether that be roads or trails or crosswalks not being painted, things of that nature. But, they had not been talking about this before. There had not been a conversation. They were just fighting about money that was owed and, and just personal grievances. And I think that we really need to get back to having these conversations. Um, so, we need to find what resources the city has, what resources the state has, and what resources the county has, and then, let's all put those resources together to combat these healthcare deserts. Because the, the only hospital that I've been talking to the community, um, that they've been talking about is Grady. They love Grady, they love Grady. They don't even understand that they deserve so much better. So, I, I wanna show the community that they deserve better. I also wanna show the elected officials that their constituents deserve better. But, there has to be somebody that can sit at the table, have these conversations, not take things personal, and say, hey, let's get back to the people's agenda. We, we gotta get away from paper and get back to people. When you put the personal in it, you take the people out of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
I, I think the same. Um, honestly, with, with a lot of the issues with the hospitals all the way on, on Cleveland Avenue, um, it is what they're accepting also, is the insurance. We, Medicaid just changed. That was a big deal, especially for the areas where it's a, it's a low poverty area. You can't go in, or you can just be serviced just a little bit, um, if you have Medicaid. If you don't have the right, the appropriate insurance, and some people just don't wanna go. They don't wanna go to the hospital because they don't have insurance and they're gonna be billed. So, I think that we have to, we have to start back at the top, honestly, to have those conversations, to make sure that everyone is able to, to be seen, whether you have, uh, Medicaid or, or not.
I assume that both of you heard the, uh, previous candidates in terms of the Sheriff's Department for the Sheriff's, for the Sheriff's Office. I don't want Labatt to come down on me. Um, was there anything that you heard from the candidates, including the sheriff, that made you think about, this is how I can help out and deal with this problem, and in terms of the overcrowding with the jail, et cetera? Was there anything that you, that they said that you heard that disturbed you or you made you think, okay, we can do this?
Uh, um, a lot of it disturbed me. Let me just be honest about that. How many of you ha- have had an incarcerated loved one or friend or family member by short hands? Okay, so, a lot of us have, and maybe some of us just didn't wanna raise our hands, but that's cool, too. Um, but, the reality of it is, unfortunately, I have had siblings, friends, and everyone else who has been incarcerated in Fulton County Jail. And every time they call, right before they say, you have a collect call from, and before they tell me how much money they want on their books, they tell me the conditions of the jail. So, while I applaud everybody for running, the bottom line is, there has been an issue in the Fulton County Jail. It did not just start with Labatt. It was an issue when I was a little girl, and the issue may still be going on. However, I feel like it's unfair for us to have a conversation... However, I feel like it's unfair for us to have a conversation about the jail without actually being true to yourselves about when your loved ones called and they told you what those conditions were in the jail, or if you have not actually visited the jail itself. I haven't visited the jail myself, but a lot of my siblings have. And these have been, these have been concerns all the time. It's the shanks that they can make, it's the condition, it's the locks, it's a lot of things across the board. So my thing is, I feel like we need to have more of a conversation about, should they be locked up? What is their mental health condition? What problems do we have in the inside that we can, where we can source out? Should, should they be in there for a long time? And, and we can get to a point where we actually know what the jail actually needs.
Thank you.
So I've had the pleasure of working with, um, Sheriff Labatt, uh, when he was chief at the Atlanta Police Department, or Atlanta Correctional Facility. And, um, I, I, I hear someone that's very frustrated, you know? Um, you take a child that's born in the projects, and you take a child that's born in the suburbs, their, their lives are going to turn out different. So if you give someone something that's failing, and that has Taser Tuesdays, and then you expect them, and, and, and a building that's falling apart, and then you expect them to turn this around, uh, in four years without a supportive commissioner, with, without supportive commissioners, without a board of commissioners, uh, that's very hard to do. Um, so I think that I would love to see what Sheriff Labatt, and, and if it is someone else, I would love to see what they're able to do with an effective commission, with a, a commission that's able to take the personal out and keep the people in. So I definitely want to do that, and when watching them, I was encouraged, and, and even more encouraged to run this race, because I can't wait to work with the sheriff to combat some of these problems and find out, day one, what are our issues, what are our abilities to solve these issues, and what resources do we may need to go outside of the county to find in order to, uh, mitigate some of these things that are happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's talk, uh, economic development. It certainly means stronger jobs, a stronger tax base, and it improves all of our quality of life. The question is, in the first 100 days, what would you do to let everyone know that Fulton County and District Six is open for business?
Since he put me on the spotlight. Um, I, I think, um, the first thing, the, the first order of business is, is for me, I need to reach out to the developers. I need to reach out to the people that have money. I need to reach out to everybody and everything that has, that can provide us the money that we need. District Six is the most underserved district, and it's the most undeserved district as it relates to not receiving what we need to have economically. I think that if we, if, if we advocate more, I can, if we advocate more to get the sort, the, the funds that's needed, we can, we can build the economic part. Did I answer, was that your question? Okay.
Yeah, can you get the question repeated for me, please?
So we're talking economic development. What are you going to do in the first 100 days to let everyone know that Fulton County is open for business? How are you going to attract more economic development in this community?
Well, one way I'm going to do is, um, we're going to look at technology. So I think that if anybody has looked at the Fulton County website, it's a little boring, and, um, just the, the, uh, being able to access the information is, is very difficult. So I think that we need to look at the way that we, uh, provide information, and we need to get up to the times, per se. And so that's definitely one thing that I would definitely do right away, is look at what is our social media presence, what does our, uh, website look like, things of that nature, and then I will make sure that we, um, advertise the businesses that exist within our district and within our county. Again, and within the cities that exist within my district, I want to promote them. So my social media is going to be crazy, my website's going to be great, and it's going to have, um, a lot of entrepreneurs and businesses that exist within the county, but mostly exist within my city. I think, you know, one thing that I've been saying, and excuse me if I'm in the church, but we got to make being involved in the political process sexy again, cool again, you know, so that our kids can want to get involved in this process. If not, then, you know, we're not going to be at the table anymore, we're going to be on the menu. So I'm sacrificing myself, Ali Carter, to be at the table for the community, for you. Um, so yeah, so that's it. First day, we're going to promote our, our district and promote our county, and, and bring some more businesses and some more people, uh, to the county. Even though we're a little overcrowded, but hey, y'all can come, we'll find a way, we'll find a way.
In mid-April, Fulton County Commissioners approved the county's first publicly-funded crisis center. Now, this is a positive step, of course, yet we know the need for more mental health services grows each day. What else would you like to see done to help the county deliver needed mental and behavioral health services?
Me again.
Well, I think that what we need to see is wraparound services. I think that we can't, and, and it's not a shot at any, anyone, or, or any, yes, it's not a shot of, of any kind, but I think that we can't just put up homes and, and put up dwellings without wraparound services, you know? Um, there is a mental health crisis, and we need to understand, uh, you know, all of us have issues that we deal with. Some may be identified as a mental health crisis, some may be identified as, I stubbed my toe this morning, and I don't know if it's broken or not. Leave me alone, you know? I'm just upset. But, but on the real, I think that we need to really identify what is a mental health crisis, and what is just the lack of quality of life. Um, but again, it's, it's dealing with resources. Can I actually ask that question one more time, because I want to make sure that I answered correctly?
Okay. The, uh, the county approved in April the first publicly-funded crisis center. What else would you like to see done to help the county deliver needed mental and behavioral health services?
So one is wraparound services, but one, I'd like to see the county work with organizations that are already on the ground doing the work. The county, um, votes on about a billion, has asked about a billion dollars to allocate to services. So I think that we really need to look at organizations that are already doing the work. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. These organizations are in lack of resources. So we need to identify what are those resources that they need, because they're already doing the work, you know? So they just need some help. So I'm going to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Can you repeat the question for me? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Uh, the county has, uh, approved its first publicly-funded crisis center. Now, what else would you like to see done to help the county deliver needed mental and behavioral health services?
Okay, so I'm going to say this because I'm a mental and behavioral health specialist. I've actually been in the field for, um, over 20 years. My, my degree is actually in counseling. Um, first of all, we need to take it serious. That's one. I, I, I feel like, um, what I've seen is that the, the, the public officials, the staff, uh, the judicial system, everyone needs to be trained in that field. That's a field that's very serious, and that's a field why, why, why we turn on the news and we see the gun violence, we see the substance abuse, we see the homelessness. All of those things have to do with mental health. We have to be educated on mental health first, before we even start giving mental health services, because we don't know what it is that they're dealing with. I know what it is that, that they're dealing with, but the people who come into the office and they, they, they seek service or help, whether that be in eviction court, uh, or, or, or they're dealing with a criminal case, as a, as a judge, or a staffer, or whomever, if you haven't had that training, then you don't know how to deal with it. So what I would like to see is for us to be a little bit more serious about what mental health is, and stop just throwing it out there as it's just a word, and, and then we can proceed in actually having those services.
Thank you both.
Are we able, are we able to rebut?
No, yeah, it wasn't. All right, so this next question is a pop quiz. Are you ready? Let's see how well you know District Six. It looks different than it did a few years ago. We are asking you to name three neighborhoods in District Six, and you can't repeat the ones that your opponent mentions. So, Ms. Anderson?
What, what do we name it again?
Three neighborhoods in District Six. Can you name three neighborhoods? Where you've been campaigning, where you've been going?
Uh, Adamsville, Grove Park, Camerton Road, Cascade, MLK, uh, it, it, all of them.
Okay, just three, all right? Mr. Carter?
Autobahn Forest, which I was a neighborhood, which I was, uh, part of the Neighborhood Association, um, Westwood, and Westview.
Okay, very good.
And West End. Did that answer the question, Sam, Ms. Williams?
I think you both passed the pop quiz. Thank you. Okay, Fulton County is booming in many communities. Many projects come before the commission with big promises of how the new development will benefit the entire community. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it does not. When, what will you do to ensure that tax abatements and other incentives directly benefit low-income communities, and not simply to enrich the developers?
That, that's a good question. Um, I, 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 I think that we have to, so the issue here is that, what you stated in the beginning, is that we all have to vote, right? The commissioners have to vote, and unfortunately, sometimes we all don't vote the right way. So to, I think the best thing to do if we do not vote the right way, as a commissioner, I need to seek outside, because I need to make sure that my district is covered.
Mr. Carter?
All right, um, so, uh, one thing that, um, when I was, um, I think I was Director of Constituent Services for Post Three at Large at the time, and, um, with Councilmember Dickens at the time, we created legislation, uh, to keep developers from, uh, from being predatory towards our legacy residents that were living along the Belt Line. At the time, um, the Belt Line was coming very fast, and, um, our seniors felt like they were being pushed out of their homes. So we wanted to make sure, because at that time, there were no, um, type of penalties of anything of the sort for developers not to opt in at affordable, uh, housing model. So we put in some legislation that, uh, made developers who were building, uh, I want to say, uh, I can't think of the mileage or how far from the Belt Line, but if you built anything from this distance from the Belt Line, then you had to opt in at an affordable model. So, just real quick, what, what kind of happened with that was, they were making so much money that they started to pay the penalty instead of opt in at the affordable model. So I think that we, what happened there was, we didn't talk enough to community, we didn't talk enough to experts that were, uh, working on these issues. And I just want to commend Ciara on your field in healthcare, and that us as elected officials, and I've been working, um, with elected officials since I was 20 years old, we have to grab Ciara's and have them work with us on issues like mental health and healthcare. Thank you so much, I'm sorry, no disrespect.
Thank you. This is actually a question from the floor, and it's for you, uh, Mr. Carter. How do you want the community to vote for you when you disrespected the community by walking out of a public forum? What do you plan to do as commissioner, not using Andre Dickens' office as your platform?
Andre Dickens has nothing to do with my platform, and I'll try to do this without, you know, being real passionate. Nobody asked me to run. Uh, Mayor Dickens didn't know if I was sitting on the side of the sidewalk asking for money when I decided to run for this office. I decided to do this because I love this community. I love Fulton County. I love the Mortons. I love the Abel Mabels. I, I, I love our community members that stay involved, that keep people from painting houses white in their community, because they want to keep the brick, the original brick. Like, I know these concerns because I was right there, and I've done the work. So, um, can, can, well, I'm not going to have you ask it again, but, uh, you know, I, I came in, first thing I did was apologize to the community. I felt like this, I've worked with campaigns all my life, since I was in my twenties, so I know political strategy. And what is going on right now for my opponent, the incumbent, is she is implementing a political strategy, because she knows the culture of Atlanta and the culture of Fulton County, and that culture in the political space is to vote for incumbents. They do not vote against incumbents, to the point where our elected officials don't even support non-incumbents. They don't go against non-incumbents. So not showing up here, she pits the two non-incumbents against each other, and the incumbent stays over here. You know? So that was a political strategy. So that's what I decided to do, that's why I decided to not step out, and I was advised by current elected officials not to, not to stay and not to, um, participate. So, um, thank you, and I love the community, I love you all. That's why I stayed and came back.
A few months ago, a hacker group, or individuals, essentially brought Fulton County government to his knees. Now, we can be sure that it's going to happen again. How would you advise your colleagues to be prepared for a better response? Not should it happen again, but when it happens again?
Um, I think that, so I, I, I actually witnessed that firsthand, actually. So I think that it, it needs to be better communication in the courthouse, period. The system was down, the phone lines was down, everybody was running around rapid. There needs to be a conversation about how we can still take the concerns of the public, what else can we use outside of that, and mailers also should have went out. The reason that they knew about it is because it was on the news. So what happens to the individuals who don't watch the television, or who don't even have a television? They don't even know what's going on exactly. The way that we communicate is, is the greatest barrier of information like that actually getting out. So we would need to have some type of plan in place to have a conversation about how magistrate is going to move, how state is going to move, how superior is going to move, and how we're going to make sure the people know exactly how they can come to us, how they can, how we can still help them, instead of everybody just noticing that the system is down, or coming down there while the system is down, is not being serviced.
I think that, um, it's a personnel issue. Um, I think that, um, the county has a lot of money, uh, to the point where my, um, where, where would she be sitting? My, um, opponent and my incumbent, my commissioner at the moment pays her Chief of Staff $180,000 for part-time. Part-time! Does anybody in here know anybody that makes $180,000 part-time? I, I don't. So the county has the money, but how is the money being allocated? Well, we need to attract new talent. We need, we have the money to do it, but are we doing it? No, we're fighting. We're telling people to come make me, you know? And we're even telling people to shut up. But we, we got to get back to the issues, we got to get back to being in the community, talking to the community, finding out what it is, what, that they need and want, and then finding the talent that can make those things happen. We got it. We have attracted so many people, so much talent to this county and to this city, well, they're just waiting for us to grab them. They're waiting for us to find them, or to say, hey, I can compete with the Googles and Microsofts and all of those natures. So, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. You know, Fulton County is a great place to live, work, and play. We conveniently locate it to a whole lot of things, yet according to the DecemberApartments.com report, the average price of a studio-sized rental, which is less than 600 square feet, was about $1,486 a month. I'm sure someone in the room is a prospective resident. What can the Fulton County Commission do to ensure that affordable housing is an option?
We need more jobs. We need, we need more jobs, we need more job training, um, we need some of these abandoned buildings open so we can provide more jobs. We need some of the people who, I, I know people in, in this area who have been working at McDonald's for 15, 20 years, or have been making up beds at a hotel for 15, 20 years, and they don't know anything outside of that. We need to be able to implement the program so we can train these people to do something else, or, or excel their actual field. Maybe they were making, they were just a housekeeper, and maybe we can provide a program where they can become a manager, and they can learn how to operate, um, in, in that hotel space or in that restaurant space. But we need to open some of these buildings that has been sitting for a long time and provide jobs for them. We need rent control. We need to be able to make sure that- We need to be able to make sure that we, we can sustain, uh, they can sustain and ensure that they, they're able to make money the same way everyone else is making money.
I think that we need to, um, can you repeat your question for me, please?
I was talking about how Fulton County is a great place to live, uh, and we are conveniently located to everything, but according to Apartments.com, it costs about $1,486 for a studio apartment that's only 600 square feet. So what are we going to do to address affordable housing in Fulton County?
So I think some people would say, "Hey, look, look at New York, you know? Look at some of these other places that have grown exponentially. And you want to be a big city. You want to attract people. You want this, that, and the third. Well, this is what comes with it." Well, no, it doesn't. This, this is Atlanta. This is Fulton County. This is East Point College Park. This is the Mecca. And our elected officials look like us, walk like us, talk like us. So guess what? They can put policies in place that benefit us, but it's not being done. It's policy. It's sitting at the table and saying, "Hey, let's put some policy in place so that we don't have these predatory, uh, developers taking advantage of our citizens." So I think the conversation needs to be had about what type of policy needs to be implemented so that these developers just don't go crazy and take our city and it ends up with places that we only visit and would never live. Thank you.
All right, we're going to, uh, wrap this up with a two-minute statement from each of you. I want to thank you for coming. So we'll start with you, Ms. Anderson, with your closing two-minute statement.
I am Ciara Anderson and I feel like I am the best candidate for District Six. I am District Six. I have not left District Six. Um, well, after they read you the lines, let me say that. Um, but for the most part, um, I, I know this community firsthand. Name a street and I'll tell you what's there. I know where the foster homes are. I know where the, where the infrastructure is needed. I know where we can, where we can actually build so we can give people jobs. I know what this community needs. I don't want to keep sitting, riding down Calmington Road and see the, see it dwindling down because that's what I see all through District Six. That's what I see. And I say it all the time. Before I even decided to run, I always say, "I cannot stand the fact that it still looks like this." So for me, I'm very passionate and it's very personal. It's not politics for me. It's very personal for me because the people of this community raised me. My next-door neighbor adopted me. It's important for me to be able to pour back into the community that poured back into me. The same way everyone else feel comfortable about going to Lenox, I want you to feel comfortable about going to Greenbrier. We shouldn't have to go outside of 285 just so we can be comfortable. We shouldn't have to go outside of 285 just so we can feel safe. That's crazy to me. I do feel like I am the best candidate for the job because I am this community.
Thank you, Ciara, uh, Dr. Anderson. And I want to commend Dr. Anderson for putting her name on the ballot. Because like we said, it's 2.1 million people in Fulton County and, um, anybody could have put their name on the ballot, but you put your name on the ballot. And I'm running because I love the passion that she has. And I want to work with people like Ciara and people who have been in the healthcare space and, and other spaces that will benefit us if we just work with them. If we go back to the people's agenda and understand that if we put the personal in it, we take the people out. So I have the experience. I've worked in government since I was 20 years old, off and on. Um, I have great relationships with a lot of elected officials and a great relationship with a lot of community members. And I really want to serve you. I think that you deserve good representation. I would like to be that representation. And I need you to go out on April 29th, tomorrow, through May 21st, and even if you, uh, I mean, through May 17th for early voting, April 29th through May 17th, and then May 21st on voting day to vote for Ali Carter for your Fulton County Commissioner of District Six. I want to serve you. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all for inviting me. I really appreciate it. And I do apologize again for what happened. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone to wrap it up?
Here she comes.
This is the good mic? No, maybe so. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheris Johnson. I'm the President of the Legal Women Voters of Atlanta Fulton County, one of the partners here. We want to, first of all, thank all the people who stayed for this, uh, for this, this final leg of our, uh, candidate forum. We appreciate it. The people need to know who the candidates are and what they have to say, what the positions are when they've asked those tough questions they have, have been posed by our very able, uh, journalist. We appreciate and thank them for that. As usual, they've done a, a great job. Stan is filled in at the last minute. We appreciate that. Want to thank all the partners that are listed on the, on our flyers. Uh, want to make sure we acknowledge all of that. It does not take just one or two. It takes a village, as they say. Want to appreciate that. We want to, of course, thank the candidates that have shown up today, of course, fine for that too, and make sure that they are, we appreciate it again. Also, we want to thank, uh, Borean Seventh-day Adventist Church, the host, um, venue for this evening. We really want to thank him for that. We gave him a little back and forth about our ability to, uh, ha- have this event here. I wanted to, as he's coming to forward here, I feel like I'm, I'm announcing a speaker here, but this is Pastor, Pastor, I know, I know, I know, Pastor Sanders. I appreciate that. Come forward, please, and have a few words for us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Everybody want to get a photo op?
Come on, let's give our candidates a round of applause. We appreciate your, your presence here today. And I want to thank you for your presence. Uh, I know a candidate that you can vote for and he will never leave you nor forsake you. He, he loves you with an everlasting love and his name is Jesus. I, I, I feel like I'm almost tempted to preach, but I'm going to say this. I am so glad and this, this, this year, this election year, on all levels, you must show up to vote. You must show up to vote. There are so many, so many, uh, things that are hanging in the balances. And I pray that you don't receive the Trump card. Praise God. You're going to get that on the way home. But please, please, uh, let's show up to vote and, uh, let's support our candidates. Uh, they are running. They are, they are not enemies because they, I know they, they, they know that they, they think that they are the best candidate. So I'm going to pray for both of them and the whole, the whole constituency that, that's running for office this year. And we know, uh, feel free to come and, and be a part of our worship service. Introduce yourselves because we have over 10,000 people that stream and so you'd be, have a greater exposure. So please feel free to be a part of this. Just come by and make, make, uh, um, yourself available and we will surely, surely accommodate you. Thank you so much. So do we close with, no, one moment.
All right, I'm sorry. I was, I was talking to, uh, Sora Kim here to make sure I, want to also remind you all that tomorrow, we're going to do this again, uh, with the, another set of candidates at Big Bethel. This is a historic church, in a historic neighborhood. We're going to go, I was, part two will be historic Big Bethel AME Church. It will, we, at that time, we will have the candidates for the District Attorney as well as District Four, uh, Fulton County Commission. You all are free and welcome to come. Again, the time is 5:30 meet and greet and the, um, 6:30 for the actual candidate forum itself. We thank you again. Appreciate it. Is that it? All right, it's a wrap.
Okay, this, this prayer will be brief. If you would just allow me, just, just, it would be very, very brief. Father, we, we thank you for the candidates. We thank you for those that are running. I pray, oh God, that you would give them strength and give them honesty and give them transparency so that when we vote for them, they will, it will be ordained by you. I pray, I ask, in Jesus' name, let everyone say, "Amen." Thank you.